This meeting is called the Inter Order with the Open Public Meetings Law. In accordance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. This meeting of May 5th, 2025 was published in the Curry News and Star Ledger and placed on the Borough's website and bulletin board at Borough Hall. A copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Brian Gallagher.
Here.
Council members. Teresa Bonner.
Here.
Andrew Conti is excused this evening. Glenn Dennehy.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Gina Stravic.
Here.
Roger Vermaat.
Here. Please stand for the salute and please remain standing after.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd just like to ask for a moment of silence. The Borough lost a longtime volunteer in our scouting traditions. His name was Christopher Munley. Mr. Munley was a great advocate for scouting. He was actively involved with Troop 84 for decades. And this man had such a wonderful positive impact on hundreds, literally hundreds, of young men in this borough. And we thank his family for sharing him with all of us. Okay, can I have a motion for approval of the minutes of April 21st?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council members. Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Vermaat.
Stay. Okay, departmental reports and notices. Primary election date changed, so the new date is June 10th, for those that should hopefully actively participate in this year's primary. Again, it's June 10th. And there is a polling location change in the borough. Van Deavere Elementary School, which traditionally has been a polling location, is no longer a polling location. And the replacement location is the Somerville Emergency Services Facility on Gaston Avenue. So if you originally went to Van Deavere School, you should go to the Emergency Services Facility on Gaston Avenue. Our Memorial Day Parade is coming up on May 26th. Again, it begins at Culver and High Street, at the memorial, at Culver and High, with a small ceremony there. Then proceeds down East and West High Street, down to...
North Doughty.
North Doughty, thank you. Passing by the Fire Museum. Rich will have something very special planned for us this year. Maybe. And then up Main Street and then down South Bridge to the cemetery for a very moving memorial service. We obviously have also the Tour of Somerville on May 26th, Monday, which we will hear from Mr. Reitman in a few minutes on this year's tour. We also have Girls' Night Out on May 15th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. That's become a Somerville tradition. And then we began the Somerville Farmers Market this past weekend. I'm sure somebody's going to give update on that. All right, I will. So, so, we began the Somerville Farmers Market this past Sunday. It will be active every Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the middle school parking lot on West High Street. And it goes from now through when, Kevin?
It's 30 weeks.
30 weeks, so through November.
And then two weeks indoors.
Okay, all right, great. So if you didn't make it to the opening ceremonies of our Farmers Market, please do so and grab yourself some wonderful, awesome food. So, West Main Street Milling and Resurfacing is ahead of schedule and they're actually done with Main Street. So they are working on a lot of the other streets now. For those that have asked me consistently over the course of the last year, yes, the racecourse roads will be paved. They will be ready for the races on Memorial Day. Not so much for the race folks, but for the public at large. And I think that is about it for departmental notices. So proclamations, we are actually pulling Emergency Medical Services Week, not that we're canceling it, we are, the squad will be coming in at our next council meeting and we will present that to them at that time. So we'll pull that. And then we also have proclamation for Raising Awareness Regarding Period Poverty and Recognizing Period Poverty Awareness Week, May 12th through 18th. Teresa, you'll get that proclamation to, I believe it's MAVE, because I think they were collecting, as you said, this past week. Great, all right, thank you. Committee reports. Let's start with Gina.
The Board of Health will meet on May 21st, so in two weeks. And there is an emphasis right now on child vaccinations. There's a high rate of disease recurrence of childhood illnesses due to weakening vaccinations and lack of vaccinations and international travel. So the emphasis is make sure children are vaccinated. The squad, although EMS Week, as the mayor said, is upcoming, they'll be here for that proclamation, they did move into their new home on Weston Avenue, the former firehouse. So the squad will have their operating quarters at Weston Avenue, thanks to the borough and the volunteers for making it all happen.
Great, all right, thank you. Glenn?
All right, thank you, Mayor. So the Environmental Commission, we had a very successful cleanup and green fair on April 26th, regardless of the rain and windy weather. We would like to thank the DPW for all of their help and setup and also the DSA for supporting our move to Division Street. We were there for the entirety this year for the first time. I think it went pretty well. We had plenty of vendors and lots of people came out, even in that rain. And also, thank you to all the residents who helped participate in also the cleanup and seeing all the different fun activities we had there. Hopefully next year we'll have better weather. But also a special note, the environmental meeting is changed from its usual Tuesday. It will be next Monday, a week from today, May 12th, right here at 7:00 p.m. So that is a different date than usually Tuesday. So we'll be here Monday. And then as far as the Fire Department goes, they handled 52 different calls in April. Four fires, three motor vehicle, four rescue, eight hazmat, five smoke reports, and 27 different fire and CO alarms, which brings the 2025 total to 216 calls, including 25 fires. So we thank them for their service and continue to enjoy the new building.
Great, awesome.
Thank you.
Teresa?
Thank you. So the Library Board of Trustees had their quarterly meeting on Thursday, April 24th, at the library. And as usual, the director's report was very positive with the events being well-attended and, you know, circulation doing well with the books and other resources. And that it's well on the way of moving, excuse me, the material that was in the New Jersey Room will be up in the loft and will be accessible or is accessible now if you go and ask to have things brought down to you. And very soon, you will be able to go up yourself to access those materials. Also, there's some good, you know, great events that are going to be coming up at the library. On May 10th at 2:00 p.m., the New Jersey Academy of Music will present a violin performance for all ages. The pieces performed will be by students aged four through 16, so that's going to be really nice. May 12th at 6:30 p.m., the Pride Social Hour for LGBTQ adults will be happening. That's a monthly event that provides an opportunity for connection with others in a supportive environment. And May 17th at 11:00 a.m., Unraveled, Somerville's Knitting and Crochet Group, will be happening for experts and novices. That happens twice a month, the first and third Saturdays of every month. So, that's it.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Randy?
Thank you. As the mayor mentioned, tickets are on sale for Downtown Somerville's Girls' Night Out. This event is Thursday, May 15th, 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. This year's theme is Nashville Country Night. It's going to be a great night for line dancing, exclusive deals and specials, surprise giveaways, and a mechanical bull. Mayor and council invited to take it for a ride.
Sounds like a challenge to me.
Two-step the night away with live music by one of New Jersey's best country music tributes band, Big Hicks. And that's B.I.G.H.I.X., live on Division Street. For more information, go to downtownsomerville.org. That is all I have.
Awesome, thank you. Roger?
All right, from the Recreation Committee, the 34th Annual Memorial Day Family Fun Ride will be happening, obviously, on the morning of Memorial Day, before the race and before the parade. You could take your family on a tour of the Tour of Somerville course. It's 8:00 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. before the parade. Check-in times at 7:30 in front of Starbucks. There's a $5 per household fee and financial assistance is available. All participants must wear a helmet, regardless of age. Riders without helmets will be escorted off the course by race officials. And obviously, non-residents are certainly allowed to participate. Registrations can be completed by mail, online, or in person on the day of the event. It's an awesome experience to get the family out and get everyone together before the races and the parade starts. So if you have the opportunity, we certainly hope everyone can take advantage.
Awesome, great, thank you. I have two items. The first is, I did receive a letter from the DOT, and it outlines a whole bunch of grant programs that are, have just become available. And Kevin, I'm going to get this to you and I'd like to have you share it with council to see if there are any programs within your areas that may warrant a grant application. So we have a municipal aid program. This one is specifically to consider projects that support walking and biking safety. There's a Transit Village Grant. We obviously are a transit village, so that one is available. We have a Bike Ways Grant. And obviously, if we can dovetail one and the other, that one and the municipal aid one, now we may have the ability to start to leverage. And then a Safe Streets to Transit Program. So the details are in here, so Kevin, I'll give this to you if you can share that with all of council. I just ask you to bring it back to your respective areas and see what can be done. All right? And then second, over the weekend, I started to receive a significant number of emails and letters. And they all related to a tragedy that struck our community and struck a family who's here tonight. And that was the tragedy of Mary Rose. And I think it struck a chord with everybody in this borough. Our police department did a wonderful job in identifying the suspect. I'm speaking very carefully, just so the family understands, I have to speak very carefully. I can speak off the cuff with you personally after this and I can tell you exactly how I feel, but I have to speak very carefully during the public session. So the police did an absolutely phenomenal job in apprehending the suspect. And the courts then took over. This person, and I'm not going to use his name because I don't think it warrants using his name.
You could say scumbag.
That's a good term for it. Began the court process. Unfortunately, the court, at this point, determined that this was not able, was not capable of...
Congratulations.
Hang on, we have to, please. So I think most logical people would look at this and say, why? And I give the family a lot of credit and Mary Rose's friends a lot of credit for staying active and involved in this. Mom Janet is here, Jim, Dad, brother Ian are all here and friends. And this is not an easy thing for this family to go through over and over again. And they are searching for justice. They're searching for a little bit of peace. Part of our job as a community is to help give them that. I reached out to the prosecutor today, and I know you've had some discussions with the prosecutor. And the prosecutor and I had a very good, solid conversation. And what I can tell you is that the prosecutor committed that, and this is his quote, "No stone will be left unturned in the pursuit of this justice." So the prosecutor's office is not done. There are avenues that they are going to continue to pursue to bring this to justice. Outside of that, you know, you may have gotten more information from the prosecutor than I have. But know that I'm involved with the prosecutor. I understand what needs to be done and what should be done, both from criminal side, from a legal side, and from a society's side. So in those letters, there were three things, and I thought those letters were done extremely well. There were three asks in that letter, and every good letter has an ask. This had three very specific asks, and I'm just going to, I'm going to edit it down. One, first and foremost, was supporting an appeal. That's to get this, to get this back to a trial, to allow justice to happen. You have my personal support and you have my public support in doing that, without a doubt. And I would venture to say everybody up at this council table would offer that support as well. Second, it requested ongoing communication with the prosecutor's office. Not that you're not getting communication, the letter was very specific to that. It's that the family and the friends want to ensure that that communication continues and that there is open dialogue, so the family can understand what exactly is happening. And the prosecutor has committed that to happen as well. And then third is legislative and judicial oversight reform. And I couldn't agree with you more. These are those instances where I think most people look and just shake their head and say, why? And I don't have an answer for you. And I don't know if we're going to have an answer very soon, but I will also reach out to our legislators on behalf of all of the letters that I received, and I'm going to share those letters with all of our legislators. Because it's very easy to craft legislation sitting in Trenton when you're removed from very horrible things. And you've lived this, our community has lived this, and we need to ensure that our legislators understand the impact this has had on your family and our community. And I will work to make that happen. So, again, I can't go into any specifics, it's just, it's not appropriate at this point from this venue. I appreciate you coming out. We ran into each other in Shop Right yesterday, and it was good to see you. Jim, it's good to see you.
You too.
And Ian, it's good to see you.
The Kellys here too. Eric, you're in charge of the letter?
I know the Kellys. They did a great job. This is, I don't know that we can make it better, but we can help to write some things, make things right. And that's what our charge is now. I hear you loud and clear. This council hears you loud and clear. Our community hears you loud and clear. The nice thing, the roses are starting to come out.
Yes.
And that's a beautiful, beautiful thing. It's a lovely testament. I'm going to stop here. If you have anything you'd like to say or if you just want to know that, yeah, go ahead.
I would just like to thank Somerville as a community for all the support that you showed me in my family this past year and half. It's been very difficult. Thank you all very much.
Thank you also. It's a good community.
We're blessed to have the support that we have.
Thank you. And if you need something, you know where to find me.
Thank you.
Shop Right too.
Shop Right.
Thank you, thank you for coming. All right. And you don't have to stay.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. It's very difficult to kind of change gears now, to go from that, which just has such a profound effect. But, you know, let's take a minute, let's just take a minute, all right? All right, let's continue on. Discussion points. So up first, we have the Tour of Somerville. Rich Reitman is here. He is, I believe, the chair this year of the tour.
Co-chair.
Co-chair. And he's going to chat with us a little bit about the tour. Obviously, it's the iconic event for Somerville for decades. Glenn, you want to add anything, intro?
I mean, I still remember going as a kid and how vitally important it was to see, you know, we just talked about, a lot about how our community comes together and helps people. And Memorial Day, you know, is an amazing day where we are honoring our country as well as our town. And then, and after the parade, then, you know, we always moved on to also sort of just celebrate the community as a community. And seeing, you know, some of the athleticism and the bike racing and the, just the people enjoying each other and it was, I remember as a kid, just how uplifting it was. And it was the day you never wanted to not be in Somerville.
Yep, excellent. Rich, you're on.
Thank you. Now that we've dealt with the important stuff, we can deal with the Tour of Somerville. We have a great committee that's been working for probably eight months on a regular basis. We also have a leadership group, which is myself, Ellen Nardoni, who is the other co-chair, and Eric Alvarez, and Sheldon Hodges is the leadership group. And as long as we don't annoy them totally, they will take over for future tours of Somerville as Ellen and I are old.
She might take issue with that.
Yeah, hopefully she won't watch this. As in the past couple of years, we have a contract with Long Tail Creative, which runs the race, and the local group runs everything else around the race. The 80th running is this year, not the 80th anniversary, but the 80th running of the race. We have, it's a tribute to Bernie Novato, which obviously I still have a problem with. Good group of sponsors, Unity Bank, RWJ, Barnum &amp; Wolf, the Verizon, and Wolfgang, Somerset Patriots, Clinton Honda, Lynn Rover of Princeton, Downtown Somerville Alliance, New Jersey Manufacturers, Tito's, and those are the big numbers that have supported this race. Growing, and financially, we look like we may be in really good shape for a change. Planned activities, just to promote the race, on the next two Sundays, we will have a presence at the Farmers Market.
Great.
We are not allowed to sell our merchandise, but we can take orders for merchandise. And you will see around town, and I will give you as many of these as you want, these little cards have a QR code on them, takes you right to the website where you can make any contribution in addition to finding out anything you want to find out about the race. We are very involved in Girls' Night Out. We've been working very cooperatively with the DSA. They've been great and offered us a lot. May 15th, which is a week from Thursday, we have a night at the Somerset Patriots, at which we will be part of their 50/50 sale. We are selling tickets, and if you buy tickets through us, through the website, we get money, Patriots get money. It's all a function of trying to finally make the Tour of Somerville profitable. We've been breaking even for a number of years and we're working hard to come out of this year's race with a nice amount of money in the checking account to be able to make next year better and then continue on. At the Patriots game, we'll have a concourse table, we'll get plenty of exposure... At the Patriots game, we'll have a concourse table. We'll get plenty of exposure. We get PA announcements. And the 50/50 proceeds come to us. We also, thanks to the Patriots, if you notice the electronic billboard right on Main Street, we have a presence already on that billboard, and that'll be there until race day. Where am I? We are planning, we'll be on Division Street with a table on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of Memorial Day weekend for more exposure. We are planning a community dinner at Alfonso's, hopefully, on Sunday, at which point we will have alumni, race alumni, available. Low-cost community pasta dinner, just to kind of bring everybody, everybody together. We'll promote that in the next week or so, as soon as we finish that agreement. We are selling an $80 merchandise bag, thanks to Sheldon's work. About $150 worth of merchandise for 80 bucks. Buy that through our website or order it when we're at the farm market. It's a reusable tote bag, two t-shirts, two beer mugs, two pair of sunglasses, a poster, and a voucher for Patriots tickets. We have a VIP tent at Wolfgang's on race day. Village is cooperating with us. They are producing a Tour of Somerville Pilsner. We are gonna have a beer tent on Maple Street, selling that beer. And we have income from that also, in addition to their sponsorship. Kids' zone on Courthouse Green, like we have every year. And other smaller items, an antique bike display on Division Street. A Race Week volunteer reception at Pop's Bicycles, who is also a wonderful supporter of what we're doing. And hopefully, a display of refurbished bicycles, antique bicycles. Pretty much our whole weekend. I have posters. I have small posters, big posters. I will leave anything here that you think you might find use for. And if you have questions, I will make sure to defer the answers to the boys over here.
Well, you know, a couple of things. One, I think it's incredible that all of you stepped up to handle the races. The amount of work, I'm familiar with the amount of work that goes into managing this race. It is, it's a full-time job. And it's done by volunteers. And again, I want people to understand that it's all of the volunteers that help make this community thrive. And your ability and wherewithal to stand up and say, "Yeah, I'll help out," is incredible. So thank you, and thank you, and all the entire team that you have assembled. It's just, it's iconic Somerville. Memorial Day weekend is, it's capped off by the bike races. And, you know, you've got all these events planned. And if people just wanna come and watch the races too, they can do that. Bring your lawn chair, you know, walk around the course. It's an event like you really haven't seen. Until you have, you know, 75 bike riders whizzing by you about three feet from you. It's pretty cool. It is. It's neat.
Apparently, we have a record number of riders already registered.
Really?
For this year.
Is O'Neill in it?
Yeah.
Anybody? Counsel?
I did have a question. What night is the Patriots game?
15th, I believe, is next, a week from Thursday.
Yeah, so when the girls are out in downtown Somerville, all the guys can take their kids to the Patriots.
We plan that well.
I don't know. I might do it the other way around. But it sounds wonderful. I hope we get the crowds back in town. You know, it's been low for some time. And like Glenn said, I remember when I first moved to Somerville, it was like unbelievable. 12 people deep and just the place to be. So it sounds like it's gonna be that place. So good luck, guys, and let us know how we can help.
And the best party is at 35 West High Street.
Yes, it is. Actually, if you can just give those to Kevin, the cards and posters.
I will sort this all out.
Perfect. Yeah, either tonight or tomorrow, whichever.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Next up is Affordable Housing Plan and the Developer Ordinance. So obviously, the state of New Jersey crafted a new law which requires every municipality to file a new affordable housing plan. We've spent the better part of the last eight months walking through and figuring out how that plan will shape Somerville for the future. So I've asked Colin to come up and kinda give us an overview of where we're at and what's led up to this point. And then, in the next seven, eight weeks, what will be happening? So that not only counsel will understand, Planning Board will understand, and more importantly, the public will understand as well. Just make sure your mics are on, or mic.
How about that? I'm in stereo.
There you go.
Do I have to do something here?
Are you going right to the screen, Colin?
Yeah, well, is it a touchscreen?
Hold on. Are you going right to the camera, or are you speaking first?
I'm gonna talk while I'm showing this.
Okay. I got you.
Okay, how do I get rid of that?
I don't know. Hey, got it. Hey, got it. You're on.
Thank you, Mayor. This slide essentially, this is going to be a very brief introduction to what we've been working on, as the mayor said, for the last eight to nine months. Mandated by the state. In March last year, we've had to work through a whole series of mandates and plans and things.
Colin, could you move that microphone closer to you? Thank you.
Anything else?
That'd be it.
Okay. In March, in May of last year, the mayor appointed Affordable Housing Committee. Beginning in November of last year, we began to draft a plan called the Fair Share Housing Plan in a format acceptable by the state and by the DCA. The team continues to meet every Thursday to review the data and to update it and prepare the plan. The state set some standards that we were supposed to meet. Every community in the state was allocated a number, and it was broken into two parts. You got the present need, which essentially, and I'll, pardon me, I'll cover it in a little more detail in a minute, is what we should have done and what we need to meet. The prospective need is what we're looking to provide over the next 10 years. Some of the numbers that we're working with is, and all these numbers come from the American Community Survey, which is part of the census data. We've got 5,706 occupied units. The median household income for Somerville is $103,869. That's according to the federal government. The, I've included the explanation of what present need is. In the old COA system, it used to be called the rehabilitation need, which was houses that already existed but needed fixing up. So what happened was, we looked at a number of variables. And the vacant land adjustment is the tool used to adjust the numbers. The present need, as was said before, was 103 units required. When the state studied the borough and every other community in the state, they looked at all open land. They didn't look at it, whether it was developed, whether it was built on, whether it was underwater or anything else. It was just vacant land. And so they came up with this formula that we could do what's called a vacant land adjustment to develop the RDP, realistic development potential. So that 103 number in the plan that we will be submitting is reduced to 74 units. The prospective need, using the same type of formulation, they said we needed to do 74 units, but we brought it down to 22. So instead of having 177 units we had to account for, we're down to 96 units that we have to account for over the next 10 years. So it was pretty good. What we've done already, the borough has introduced an affordable, an ordinance for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And this is a fund that is dedicated to providing either funding or other tools to help rehabilitate existing housing or possibly even constructed housing for the use of affordable housing. One of the things in the plan asks for what type of housing. And we're encouraging, and the mayor can talk to this for many minutes on end, a whole choice of affordable housing alternatives. Looking at veterans, handicapped, single heads of households, and maybe even looking at what they call small houses. Whether we build them, whether we encourage others to build them, whether someone else builds them and dedicates them. They're all included in the plan. And tonight, we're going to introduce a developer's fee ordinance. And this will come into effect when the plan is submitted. What it essentially means is, anyone who builds anything that has four residential units or above will pay a fee to the borough. And there's a calculation, and I'm not going to go into it tonight. I believe, I probably will when it gets adopted. But it's a percentage of the equalized assessed value. So it's not a formula that you will give me $100 for every 100 square feet. It's whatever the new unit is assessed for by the assessor. It's a percentage of that. And it varies whether it's commercial, non-commercial, or pure residential. So that fee funds, the trust fund, which funds affordable housing that is not being built by a commercial enterprise or something like that. The data we used was our own Somerville Housing Authority data, senior citizens' housing documents, trying to formulate as much as we could, the Board of Social Services at the county, and the DCA fire safety hazard list, which allowed us to look at all homes that are either noted as affordable on some rule or some other document within the state. It should be noted, because I'm not going to go into a lot of this verbiage, that for COA Rounds 1 through 3, the borough complied to the requirements of COA with market rate housing. That is moved away from us with the current housing market being as it is, so we've had to comply to this. I wanna talk briefly about the definitions that both the federal and state governments and we have to use. You've got very low-income housing, which determines to be 30, household income equal to 30% or less of the median income for the region. Now, I haven't made a big note of it here, but the median income in Region 3, which is Hunter, Middlesex, and Somerset, for a three-person household is $131,580. So to be considered very low-income, you've gotta be making 30% of that. Low-income housing is equal to 50% or less of that median income. And moderate is 80%, or down to 50%. So the whole thing is based on the median income as determined by the most recent census. And it's not a thing that we can do to control that number. So where are we? It seems to me that 5/7 is in two days from now. We hope to have the draft plan finally edited enough to distribute to both the Planning Board and to the council for review. It won't become public at that point. It will be a review exercise. On the 14th, which is a week from Wednesday, Planning Board will review it formally. We then have to notice that the Planning Board is reviewing, and I'm going to make recommendations to counsel. And that'll happen on the 28th, that meeting. So that is a critical meeting. In between times, on the 19th, the council will have a review and comment on the plan. We've got here that in June, we do the first introduction of the Developer Fee Ordinance. We've pulled that forward to tonight. And the next council meeting, hopefully, it will be adopted. And the reason it's pulled forward is there's other documents being prepared. And we didn't wanna flood council with too much all on one evening. I think that with the critical dates, you've got the 16th, or actually, the 28th of this month being the Planning Board, and then the 16th of June, because that is when, hopefully, the council will get the plan and recommendations from the Planning Board and endorse the plan. And once it's endorsed, we've got 48 hours to get the plan and supporting documents submitted to the courts and to the DCA. And that finishes the first part of the process. Following the submission to the courts and the DCA, there'll be challenge periods. They have the right to challenge us. Independent organizations have the right to challenge us. And we won't get accepted until January of 2026. The acceptance stops all challenges. We may have, we have the opportunity then to go back and make amendments. The plan will become active on July 1st, 2026. And that's, I believe, all I've got for you.
Yeah, so we wanted to give counsel just kind of like a broad overview of where we're at. Once you get the draft plan, that will start to give you more detail, or will give you detail, not more detail. And you'll be able to see where the committee went, where the Planning Board went, with our responsibility in fulfilling our role in providing for affordable housing. You know, the committee has been working on this for months. And we believe it's in fairly good shape, that it's something that works for Somerville. And so our Planning Board's gonna have a crack at it. Then the council has a crack at it. Then the Planning Board has another crack at it. And then the Borough Council has another crack at it. And in all of those meetings, the public has a crack at it.
They do. Oh, sorry.
And so it's a very open public process, as well it should be. And our professionals will be doing a deep-dive presentation for both the Planning Board and for the council. And once you get the plan, if you do have questions, I would suggest that you email them in so that they have time to understand the nature of the question and provide backup data, if necessary, as well. About cover it?
No, I think you got it. I just wanted, if I can. One of the directions that the committee was given was to produce a document that wasn't voluminous in number of pages, but was accurate and concise and stated the case very well. We're gonna get a document that's about 70 pages long. It's concise. It supports itself. And I believe that our attorney has told us that we are one of the first communities to reach this mine- we are one of the first communities to reach this milestone at this particular point in time, and we've got five to six weeks until everyone's got to flood the state with their affordable housing plan. So the mayor is correct, we're in a very good situation, and as long as we can address the concerns given by both this board and by the Planning Board and the public, and get them vetted and either included into or responded to in due course, we're in a good place.
Well, one of the other things we're developing is a, a short sheet, a short sheet bullet synopsis of the seventy pages. And, and it's, it's volum, there's a lot of information in a very small package, and what we're trying to do is to kind of condense all of the information, all of the items that most people will say, well, did you think of this, or why aren't we doing this, into one document that, that people who don't want to take the time to read seventy pages, which is most of us, they can actually understand the whole theory and, and, and push forward for affordable housing in Somerville, and we're, we're taking great pains. We took, some of our cues, whether you agreed with the, the School Board referendum or not, they put out a, a one cheater that was very concise. You may not have agreed with it, but it was a very concise document, listing a lot of information, pertinent information. So we're, what we're trying to do is to, is to model after that and put something out that is easily understandable by all. So, that's about it. So, much more to follow over the next seven weeks.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. And then the last item up for discussion is the Skip the Stuff campaign, and apparently there's nobody here to talk about skip the stuff, so we're going to skip that stuff. We'll pull that from the agenda as well. I'll ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, public portion is now open. Please state your name and address for the record, and please address your comments to me.
My name is Matt Robishan. I'm at twenty-two North Richards. I have a neighbor behind me who has been putting out peanuts for squirrels, and this has been going on for well over a year. I complained to code enforcement, I've complained to the Board of Health about it. We've now got a rodent infestation, the entire neighborhood's being affected by it, our whole block. Someone's putting out rat poison to try to mitigate this problem, and it, now we're worried about dogs getting into the rat poison, everything. When I talked to code enforcement, they talked to the attorney, and they said there's no, there's no specific borough rules against feeding animals, which I understand, we don't want to, you know, if someone wants to put out a bird feeder, that's fine, but we're talking, like, I have thousands of peanut shells across my property, I've got so much rodent damage from chewing, they're in the cars, they're building nests inside of the engine bay, they're just, they're chewing up the, the gutters, I have to keep replacing the gutters.
This is a house adjacent to you or behind you?
Yeah, it's directly behind me, it's on the same block.
All right. If, I don't want to put the address on, on the record, so maybe after the meeting, we're, if you can hang around for a little bit, you can give the address to, to Mr. Sluka.
Okay.
Did you call the Board of Health?
I did, yes, the, yeah, the Somerset Board of Health.
So, so, so there's a couple of, I think, I think what we will do, rather than working individually.
I am a little familiar with this.
You are?
Yeah. So I think a conversation afterwards.
Yeah.
I don't have the updates from, from the health agency, but I am a little familiar with this came up, and a conversation about two weeks ago with code enforcement and health.
Okay, all right. So let's, let's chat afterwards. I just don't want to put somebody's address on the, on the record.
That's fair, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Public is now closed. Ordinance for introduction, ordinance number zero, sorry, twenty-seven sixty-four, is amending the land use and development fee ordinance of the borough of Somerville, establishing an affordable housing development fee. Colin, you want to give us just a very brief overview on this, please?
I'm not going to show anything here, but it, the, what you, what you have attached to your agenda is very comprehensive. You've got a copy of the draft, as I call it, because I've already seen some, one section that needs to be clarified a little bit, so that'll be done between now and next meeting. But it defines what housing developments are, what COA was, compliance, the developer's fee, it lists the percentiles that each builder or developer has to submit based on the size of their development, and whether it's a commercial development, it's a residential development, or a private development. I won't go into the fees right now, because they may, in fact, alter slightly between now and introduction.
Yeah, and one of the reasons we're trying to get this on the table now is so that developments, developments that are five units and above will fall under our affordable housing plan.
Correct.
Development units that are four units and less do not fall under that, but we want to be able to capture that portion still as a part of our overall affordable housing plan. So that's, that's the reason for, for doing this.
Yeah, and, and that's one of the reasons why we've pulled it forward a little bit, even though there's got to be some word changing, because there is an inclusionary ordinance that will be introduced in the near future as well, which is, is a companion to this, and essentially says the, these, you know, the whole borough will be included in the developer's fee, and, and some other things.
Yeah, there will be some language changes in here, we, we know that, between now and, and adoption, we'll have some, some modifications. And whatever modifications we make, let's make sure we redline them so Council can understand what has changed from one version to the next.
Absolutely, and I think the, the, the important thing, and I believe I mentioned it at some point tonight, the, the fees, regardless of the percentage being levied against the developer, is based on what the borough's tax assessor assesses the property at. It becomes a percentage of the equalized assessed value. So that's important to bear in mind when you're reading through this, that it's not just a made-up number, it's a number that has been calculated based on the value of that unit, or units.
Again, while it's not required that we hold a public hearing at introduction, I always allow for public comment at introduction. So I'll open up for public comment on twenty-seven sixty-four. Hearing none, I'll close public comment at twenty-seven sixty-four, and I'll ask for a motion for introduction.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I, I just wonder, I understand the reason for rushing this through, but we're going to make multiple changes, it's very dense, I'm not sure that we should be bringing it forth until it's ready, and there's numerous questions that I have, as I said, it's very dense, and I know we've talked about it, but we haven't gone through it line by line. I'm not prepared to vote on this.
So it is a Chapter one oh two ordinance, which would require it, it also go to the Planning Board, so that's where they'll also, better than have a public hearing as well.
Yeah, so, so it will leave here, it will go to the Planning Board, the Planning Board will have an opportunity to weigh in and make some comments and revisions, and then their revisions will also come to the Borough Council for final review and adoption. At that point, you can ask any final questions. Again, as I stated before, if you have questions on these items, it's incumbent upon us to ask them prior to the meeting starting, so that our professionals can be prepared to answer them while they're here. So, that's what we got. So.
Can I ask two?
Yeah.
Two quick questions, though, just about the exemptions, just out of curiosity. Listing the exemptions is the transit hub, and then also projects determined by the New Jersey Transit Corporation to be part of a transit village. Do we have things that are still, that that would apply to at this point?
I'm not sure I understand the question, though.
Well, the, the exemption for the, for the fee lists things that are described as a transit hub, where then there's another bullet that says, that's part of a transit village plan. I'm just curious as to if, if we have any other projects that are, I know we're sitting in one right now, but that's, that's already been built. That's why I'm just asking them if there was anything else that's.
Other than property owned by New Jersey Transit, no.
Thanks.
This followed, just, just to add a little footnote, it followed some statutory guidance. Ex-Judge Miller issued something called a twelve forty document, which laid out a number of steps that we need to take. That is part of this, and I agree, it's a dense document, I go cross-eyed reading it, but it becomes part of the submission we make with our plan. So we're up against a mandatory state deadline to get all this supporting paperwork done.
And, and this is, this is an introduction, Gina, so we have the ability to look at it over the course of multiple meetings.
I understand that.
So, any other comments? I'll ask for a motion for introduction.
So moved.
Second.
Did I do it already?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
We're going to have to vote. It's up to a vote now.
All right, sorry.
It's okay.
I get lost sometimes. All right, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
No.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Okay, ordinances for public hearing and adoption. Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Ordinance number twenty-seven sixty is amending Chapter one sixty-six dash forty-two, Schedule One, entitled No Parking, to Allow For Parking On Central Avenue On The South Side. Fairly self-explanatory. I will ask for a motion for public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Public hearing on twenty-seven sixty is now open. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close, public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
And motion for adoption, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, twenty-seven sixty-one is amending Article Two, Chapter one oh two, Section Four, Subsection P, entitled Definitions And Word Usage, Definitions P, adding the term portable on-demand storage, POD, or temporary storage units to the Land Use Code. This is an effort to capture and, and to control, to some degree, the use of pods in the neighborhoods, and, and have them begin to be registered, and so that they're not popping, sprouting up and then remaining there, so that there's timeframes on them. I will ask for a motion for, to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Public hearing on twenty-seven sixty-one is now open. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Motion for adoption, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, twenty-seven sixty-two is amending Chapter seventy-four B, entitled Dumpsters To Include Portable On-Demand Storage Units, PODs To The Borough Code, similar to twenty-seven sixty-one. I'll ask for a motion for the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Public hearing on twenty-seven sixty-two is now open. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
I'll ask for a motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Okay, consent resolutions. We are pulling Consent Resolution Number one-two-two. That will be deferred until next meeting or the meeting thereafter.
The following meeting.
Following meeting, okay. We are also adding Resolution one-three-four, which is a resolution recognizing May fourth through ten, two thousand and twenty-five, as Small Business Week in Somerville Borough. Actually, walk-ons have to be voted on separately, correct, Kevin?
That's been our practice.
Good, okay. All right, any to be pulled off for further discussion? Okay, so, we have one-twenty-three is approving escrow refund on application twenty-one dash zero-zero-nine-Z, known as sixty-four Mercer, Block one oh oh, Lot six, to Jose Fenko and Jerusha Fenko from the Board of Adjustment escrow account. One-twenty-four is appointing Catherine Hauses Municipal Court Judge, retroactive from March eighteen for three years. One-twenty-five is rescinding Resolution twenty-four one-one-oh-four-three-two-zero, awarding a contract to Island Tech Services under New Jersey State Contract, as noted, in the amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars for G-Tech video solution for interview room system. One-twenty-six is authorizing a contract for the purchase of Interview Room Two, camera standard from Axon Enterprise, under State Contract noted, for law enforcement equipment and installation. One-twenty-seven is authorizing the sale of surplus property, being a two thousand and fourteen Chevrolet Caprice through municipal. One-twenty-eight is approving the hiring of lifeguards for the twenty-five pool season. One-twenty-nine, authorizing payment for the five hundred dollar application fee for a supplemental grant from the Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund to the NJEDA for the remediation of certain sections of the Somerville landfill BDA. One-thirty is approving the hiring of Janet Cottone as seasonal hourly pool director. One-thirty-one, accepting a grant of five thousand dollars and approving Chapter one-fifty-nine for State of New Jersey Sustainable Jersey Grant for PSENG Energy Efficiency Partnership Program Outreach Campaign funded by PSENG. One-thirty-two is establishing a seasonal farmers' market fee of three hundred dollars for fire safety type-one inspections for the full season and amending the existing fee schedule. One-thirty-three is approving Somerville Fire Department application for Dylan Rice. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, one-thirty-four is a walk-on resolution. Again, this is recognizing May fourth through ten as Small Business Week in Somerville Borough. I like to think that every week is Small Business Week in Somerville Borough, not just May fourth through ten, so.
I agree.
We would encourage everybody to shop local, shop downtown, shop Somerville. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner.
Yes.